Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Sorry we're a few souls short here this morning, but we're going to continue on and move forward. I think what we should do is start out with -- Richard, why don't you lead us in the salute to the flag?
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It says, "We are now going to have a report from the planning director." EJ, are you going to talk to us a little bit?
We need Miss Rule.
Oh, I'm Miss Rule, I'm sorry. Kathy?
It's very important.
I'm sorry.
That one thing. Commissioner Gray is absent. Commissioner Nader.
Here.
Commissioner Moss.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson is absent. Commissioner Ricucci.
Here.
Commissioner Denio is absent. Commissioner Sheterson.
Here. Well, we have a bare minimum.
We do.
And I'm not sure what the reason for it is, but we have to just do the best we can with the tools we have.
I know we were planning on five commissioners today and just last minute Commissioner Gray was not able to make it. So, and we'll explain how that may or may not affect today's meeting. Before I do that, I'll jump into Planning Director's report and then we'll get into that. Just real quick, I want to follow up on our -- the last planning commission on May 22nd where the planning commission considered the Lundberg variance. We did receive two appeals. One was filed by the pellant and one was filed by the applicant. Right now, we're tentatively scheduled to go to the Board of Supervisors meeting in July. I think it's the 21st, 22nd of July, so that will be up in Tahoe. Of course, today, we're going to hear the Sheridan Community Plan update. The next meeting for the planning commission is going to be up in Tahoe. That will be at the North Tahoe Event Center in Kings Beach. There's four items on that agenda right now. The Faulkner Garage, the -- there's a subdivision modification at Fulton Acres, the North Star Mountain Master Plan, which the final EIR is out right now. And then, we're going to get an update on the Tahoe Community Plan. And then, July 10th, we'll be back down here in Auburn. And tentatively scheduled is a community center zoning text amendment. At the board recently, June 3rd, they took action to approve the two master plans for Placer Vineyards. That was a sewer master plan and the transit master plan. So, they're making progress out there. Then, I've mentioned this before, but the appeal of the Camel's Hump caretakers residence, that is going to go to the Board of Supervisors on June 17th. So, for today, because we only have four commissioners, I'm going to turn it over to Karen and explain what the option is today.
Morning.
Good morning.
I have just a question.
Yeah.
On our next meeting, the town meeting, when are we going to meet here? Do I usually come here? Do we have a date, a time yet?
Thanks, thanks for asking that. Yeah, we're going to -- for those who need a ride, if anybody doesn't need, please let us know. We'll leave the Siedra Building from the lobby area probably around eight in the morning.
Eight o'clock, okay.
Eight o'clock sharp. So whoever needs a ride, we'll make sure we'll get you up there.
Thank you.
And we'll send out -- I'll have Kathy send out a confirmation email of, you know, time, place.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
This has rarely, if ever, come up in front of this commission, so I will advise you that under the government code, even on a recommendation for a general plan amendment, which this is, as a community plan, there must be a majority of the membership of the planning commission sending any recommendation forward. That means a unanimous vote. What I'd recommend you do is proceed with your hearing, and when we get to deliberation, we can assess what your recommendation may be and see whether, in fact, we can move this forward or whether we need to continue it. But I just wanted to advise you, because it is a particularity of the government code that is rarely brought up again, because usually we have more than four commissioners at a hearing, so I wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
But we have the really good ones.
Good point.
Well, that's a good point, good point. I'm sure you all agree.
Quality and quantity.
Okay, well, thank you. I think we understand. So then, I guess our next step is to go to the public and see if there's anyone that would care to address the planning commission on items other than the agenda item that we're hearing today.
You've got to wait until each is --
Hold on, sorry.
This is just for general stuff, not what we're going to be discussing.
It's pretty okay.
Okay.
I'm not against it.
Well, none of us are. If there's nothing else or no one coming up, we'll move on into our 1005 item, which is the Sheridan Community Plan Update. And I guess, Christopher, are you going to enlighten us on this?
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Christopher Schmidt with the Planning Services Division. Today, we're before you to seek a recommendation on adoption of the Sheridan Community Plan. And what I plan to do is just give you a real brief background on some of the outreach we do to the community, since we covered that with the workshop we did with you in -- back in January. We talked about the outreach and some of the feedback. So I'll just summarize that and then we'll get right into some of the critical issues, mostly land use changes that are proposed. So, the Sheridan Community Plan is our second oldest community plan in the county. It dates from 1976. Not much has changed in Sheridan since that time, mostly because of water and sewer constraints in the town site. The water system and the sewer system were out of compliance with state laws, but recent upgrades have allowed new connections for the first time since, I believe, around 1980. There's a capacity for 82 new connections to the water and sewer systems out there. So that was a big driver of the Community Plan update, besides it being a very old document. And also, it allowed us to reach out to the community to find out what has changed, what are your priorities, what do you want to see in Sheridan, what's the future of Sheridan look like? And in doing so, we reassessed the land use plan, which has been unchanged since 30 years ago. So we started off our effort back in the fall of 2012. We sent out a survey to all property owners that are within the Sheridan MAC boundary. 436 property owners received surveys. We got 97 back for 22.2 percent response, which is actually pretty good for a survey. They say if you get 15 percent, that's a pretty good read on what the community wants to see or what their priorities are. And the key question we asked them is, what do you want to encourage in Sheridan? What are you looking to see happen out here? In the top five, we're develop the existing town site. So a lot of revitalizing the grid, which we call the town site, which is the historic part of Sheridan, provide some highway services along 65 and redevelop the historic commercial heart of Sheridan, which is 13th Street. There was a desire that maybe get a gas station or shop, a small shop or a cafe, because people didn't really want to have to drive to Lincoln or Wheatland to get gasoline or services. And also, some limited new housing and, like I said, day-to-day shopping was a priority. Then we followed up the survey with a kickoff workshop attended by over 100 people in Sheridan and basically asked the same questions. What do you want to see Sheridan look like in the future? What land use changes should occur? And there was also a question out there about the fairgrounds in Roseville was looking to relocate, and we asked residents, would you like to have the fairgrounds in the Sheridan area? And what we received back was pretty much a mirror of the survey we did. Keep it rural, retain small-town community feel, preserve open space, no land use changes outside of the town site. And they said no to the fairgrounds relocation. So Supervisor Wagen set up a subcommittee through the MAC. It was open to anyone that wished to attend. We held a series of nine meetings. We looked to them to provide feedback and input on recommendations that staff had and also to develop a vision for the future of Sheridan. So take what we heard from the public and create the plan. So they were a key piece of this whole effort. And the 59 names you see appear were Sheridan residents or property owners that participated in the MAC, the MAC Subcommittee effort. So these are -- they really put the community in the community plan, so we thank them for their hard work over about a year of work and effort. First question we asked the Subcommittee and we also asked at the workshop was, did you want to see the existing plan area boundary expand? So the current 1976 Sheridan General Plan is pretty much this area around the town site. So here's the town site, here's old Highway 65, here's new Highway 65. So the town site is this old grid area, and here is the plan area boundary. Here, this dark orangish-yellow is the MAC area boundary. So the plan recommended by the Subcommittee is to expand from here out to this orange and also include 1,200 acres that the United Auburn Indian Community owns north of Kirchner Road. So this blue area is the proposed new community plan area. So it now encompasses 662 properties with nearly 15,000 acres, small population for a community plan of just 1,172 in 2010. Since we're expanding or proposing to expand the plan area boundaries, the board will be -- it'll be a general plan amendment to change the land use diagram. So a lot of this area that's now covered in the general plan will now be part of the Sheridan Community Plan. So this diagram changes and this goes to white. The Subcommittee worked on a vision for Sheridan, kind of take that input and kind of build the foundation with a vision statement. And you'll see a lot of these key words are from the feedback we received from the public. Keep the small-town character, revitalize the town site, high quality aesthetics to preserve what exists today, meeting community development needs such as shopping and enhance the quality of life for current and future residents. We took all that and we had five key drivers that the plan attempts to implement. Maintain the existing character, protect agricultural uses in open space, encourage infill development in the town site, including 13th Street, provide community services, that shopping, like I said, and diversify and expand the economic base. One of the focuses we did was 13th Street. So this area in purple, these two blocks, is all C2 general commercial zoning today. And there was a recognition that there's probably too much commercial zoning in Sheridan based on the population and the traffic now being shifted off this old Highway 65 here. My pointer's gone. Over to the bypass. So we looked at what else can we bring to 13th Street to help get that filled in, because today, a lot of that land is vacant. So we thought about live-work units where someone could own a house and also run a business there. It's more intense than a home occupation, so you can actually have a storefront, you can have outside employees, but the owner of the business would have to live there. So that's a really unique use, not only to Sheridan but to Placer County, and we'll talk about a zoning text amendment that's necessary to get that done. Also, detach residential. You couldn't do detached residential in our C2 zone today. So we're doing a combining district. We're calling the Town Site Commercial Combining District. And that'll allow us to set standards and guidelines and also uses for that district along 13th Street. So we're trying to introduce things that can help get this 13th Street filled in, but also maintain that existing town site character. So there's seven parcels, getting the combining district, total of 5.3 acres, runs along 13th Street. Here's Riosso Road. This is an existing grocery store that stays unchanged. One of the things we are going to allow is gas stations along here, which is allowed in C2 today, but the Subcommittee decided just to have it on these prime corner lots and not down in here where this is all residential on these side streets. But also said some design standards such as parking, an enhanced streetscape along 13th Street with historic lighting, maybe some pavers, diagonal parking, et cetera. Guidelines for the architecture. The old Sheridan cash store and the owners here today, built in late 1800s, is vacant, but it's a historic property, maybe one of the oldest in Placer County. So not only protecting that, but having the new construction there kind of mimic that old look to Sheridan. Back in, I think it was 1872, the town site pretty much burnt down, but that cash store remained. So a lot of the history is lost, but there is still some remaining. And then also, some standards for lighting and signage. So part of the package going before you today and going to the board is a zoning text amendment to define live-work units in the zoning ordinance, which is not defined today. And here's the proposed definition. And then the other zoning text amendment is to create that new Town Center Commercial Combining District. It allows you unique development standards that are all in the community plan. The zoning text amendment is written, basically shifts you. It's pretty generic. It says the standards and uses are in the community plan where this district is created. So it basically punts to the community plan, and you're seeing the land use and the community design sections, all those standards I've been talking about. That's chapter two, or chapter three and chapter four. And we also, in the combining district, we can delete or allow uses normally not allowed in C2. And these are those uses that we decided to take out, just outdoor recreation, contracting yards, RV parks, vehicle storage, mini storage facilities, just uses that really aren't appropriate for the town site. So that's a complete list of uses we're pulling out of that combining district. To provide another, more sites for highway service or retail or gas station, we're proposing a rezone of two parcels. One is a Caltrans little triangle piece and then a 5.3 acre site here at Riosso and Sheridan-Lincoln Boulevard. So all this, the new intersections here, most of this area in green here is owned by Caltrans, so not much we can do with that. So the highway service zoning is proposed here. The MAC Subcommittee, when we discussed land use changes, originally proposed highway service zoning for this northern piece here, these two private properties. The property owner here, after they received the letter we sent to all the owners of parcels that were proposed to be rezoned last October, showed up at the Subcommittee meeting in November and objecting to the highway service zoning. And the Subcommittee decided that they would remove her from highway service. So now we're with 6.2 acres on these two corner parcels. The community plan has a bunch of design standards for that highway service zone, the building architecture. Subcommittee wanted something more in keeping with the rural area of Sheridan, not your typical corporate architecture, but something more country or farmhouse design. Landscape standards, signage standards, information on pedestrian access, and then also buffering, which the property owner to the north wasn't extremely pleased with buffering language we were proposing. So we actually added on page 68, two paragraphs with more detail about what they have buffering between the two properties, which really is really between the northern piece and that southern highway service, because it talks about the different land use zoning categories, their rural estate and then the highway service require a minimum buffer of 50 foot and landscaping and potentially fencing. The other key priority, new jobs and investment. Most of the industrial land that's currently in Sheridan is either owned by Caltrans, like I said, or is already developed. So we're proposing a rezoning of two parcels, this number two and number three. Number two would go to Business Park, and number three would go to Industrial Park. All this area on this side of Sheridan-Lincoln Boulevard is on Septic and Well. So the anticipation is unless someone brings water and sewer over and connects, that it's going to be a low-intensity industrial-type use. So we have a use permit combining district, just as notice that if anyone develops over here, it's going to go through the use permits process, because you have to have your water and sewer issue resolved. The reasoning for the Business Park on number two was because of frontage on the bypass. The Business Park is a little cleaner use, doesn't allow for outdoor storage or heavy, heavier industrial, so it's a little better aesthetics along the bypass. Number three is your industrial park uses. The priority of keeping the rural areas intact or no land use changes on that town site. We're not proposing any increased residential density outside of the town site. Matter of fact, no increased residential density in the town site. So all that land use stays the same, except there are a few key changes in those rural areas, and I'll walk you through those. There's an Industrial Park parcel on the corner. This would be the northeast corner of Nader Road and Sheridan-Lincoln Boulevard. We don't know the history of how this got Industrial Park zoning. It was early 70s or even before then, because it's in the 1976. That's not even in the 1976 General Plan, because it's outside the boundaries. So it's Industrial Park, all the surrounding parcels are all farm. It's Farm 80 over here, Farm 20 on this side of Sheridan-Lincoln Boulevard. So it's really an outlier in the community plan that would clean that up and make it consistent with the current zoning in that There's two big mitigation banks in the plan area, the Silvergate Mitigation Bank off of Riosso Road and on the Stutter County Line, and then the Yankee Slough Mitigation Bank south of the town site. The recommendation is rezon those from farm to open space, recognizing that they can't be developed in the future, they're protected by permanent conservation easements. However, the Silvergate Mitigation Bank, when they did the easement, they retained the rights for three two-acre parcels, so they're getting rural ag on this number six, three rural ag building site, two acre minimum. So that recognizes where they're allowed to build those three future homes within their easements. So that was protected by the conservation easement. So the proposed rezoning or the proposed zoning for the community plan area, all the changes are numbered, mostly in the town site, and then your mitigation banks in the industrial park zoning here. A summary, conservation mitigation banks, a little over 1,300 acres. The Business Park and Industrial Park, 59 acres. The rezone to farm, 33 acres south of town. The highway service zone, 6.2 acres. And then the overlay zone or the combining district on 13th Street, 5.3 acres. So in total, of the 15,000 acres, we're proposing to rezon 1,400 of those acres, or nearly 10 percent of the plan area. However, 92.7 percent of that rezoning that's proposed would be to open space. The other two bigger changes, I think, in the plan document was a desire by the Subcommittee to not allow flag lots in the rural areas. They didn't think it was in keeping with that rural character of the community. And also, not to allow gated subdivisions. So parcel maps or subdivision in the rural area, no gates. Private properties, you can still do your gates. A lot of them are ag and they need the gates for their livestock. So in summary, here's those five key drivers and how the plan helps implement that and other county measures. Maintain existing community character and protect rural, protect agricultural uses in open space. Leave the rural areas alone, no rezonings proposed out there. Remove the industrial park zoning, because that area is agricultural. Encourage infill development and revitalize the town site. The county's doing that by providing water and sewer connections, so those vacant parcels in or near the town site can be developed in the combining district along 13th Street to bring new uses in the town to infill that historic commercial center of Sheridan. Provide community services. We have the highway service rezoning at Riosso and Sheridan-Lincoln Boulevard. And then diversify and expand the economic base. We're doing that by rezoning additional land for industrial uses. So on May 14th, after at least two informational discussion meetings, the MAC took action to recommend adoption of the community plan at a 4-0 vote. So we're very pleased about that, and that brings us before you today. And since that time, we heard from PCTPA, he had some comments about the plan. So this is a last-minute change. They wanted to see some additional language about airport overflight zone and also public transit in the plan area. And much of the response, or they're not even a concern, but they really wanted to see some language in there about meeting unmet transit needs in the plan area. So there is, the population's not really there to provide consistent or daily service, but they are open to looking at providing like a pilot program or at least if it's grant-funded, maybe something for six months to try to gauge what the public response would be. And they'd be mostly grant-driven, so if they can point to community plans saying the plan or the county says this is a priority, this will help them with their grant efforts. So we're proposing this plan assumption on page 17, take it out, it's not expected to be provided, but saying the county should look at ways to bring public transit into the plan area. So a minor change, but it certainly helps PCTPA. And our Transit Director is okay with this. For the overflight zone, the Lincoln Airport's overflight zone nearly touches the town site. So they were asking for a new policy, and we're going to add that in the Health and Safety Chapter, and it says Policy Number 7, that if you propose a project in the compatibility zone, C1, C2, or D, that you'll comply with the rules, which is, it's what's in effect today, but this just formalizes that, and they wanted to see it in writing. So we're proposing they add that to page 142. And then additional discussion about bus service on page 162. The county should consider expanding or developing transit service in the plan area. So we would ask for the commission to do is to recommend those amendments to the draft plan when we bring that to the board for inclusion in the final document. And with that, the staff recommendation is to adopt the negative declaration, or recommend the board adopt the negative declaration, approve a general plan amendment to change that, the land use diagram, because we're expanding the plan area boundary, and also a general plan amendment to actually adopt the Sheridan Community Plan, which were placed in 1976 General Plan. Adopt a zoning consistency ordinance that will rezon those properties that we discussed in the plan area, and then the zoning text amendment to create a new combining district designation and add the definition for live-work units. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Can we take all those as one item, or do we have to adopt those individually?
Because there's only four of you, I would recommend we take them separately.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Chris, I'm sorry.
As you know, Chris, I grew up in this area, so this was something I really got involved in reviewing. And I have to say, you've done an outstanding job of engaging the community in this process.
Thank you. It was a team, it was really a team effort.
Yeah, you and the rest of the staff. And, you know, I think if, to give any credibility to an effort to kind of give a vision for the future of the community, it's so critical to get feedback from them at every level possible. And it looks to me like you've vetted this to its fullest extent. So I appreciate the hard work that went into this.
Thank you.
Question?
Yes, go ahead.
Christopher, the change in the general plan area, does that then change the MAC area also to fit within the general plan or?
It does not. Unless the board decides to grow the MAC area, well, I'll go back to that map and explain it. So we're going out to the Sheridan MAC area boundary. However, that United Auburn Indian Community piece is in the joint MAC area. It's shared between the Sheridan MAC and the rural Lincoln MAC.
And that was my next question. We're proposing that that piece of property be included solely in the Sheridan MAC or Sheridan General Plan area?
No, it would remain in the joint area, even though it's in the Sheridan Community Plan area boundary.
Okay. And the property owner of that piece of property, are they on board with being included in the general plan area?
We met with the United Auburn Indian Community and we never really got a yes or no, but we didn't get a no. But the feedback, they were supportive. They certainly didn't say no, we're against it, but we did meet with them one-on-one. Let's go back very quick.
Should've jumped in while the slide was.
It's this one here. Okay, so this yellow is the joint area. And at one time, we proposed to bring the blue and the red all into the Sheridan community plan boundary, and when we went to the rural Lincoln MAC, it was not received very well. So we decided at a staff level, we went back and regrouped, took all this yellow out, talked to the Indian community about keeping this in or bringing this into Sheridan, and they seemed to be fine with it, we haven't heard from them in a few months. So today's proposal is for this blue area, this stays joint. This would also stay joint unless the board comes back and says, okay, let's have the MAC expand to this, a joint area stays yellow or whatever they choose to do, or even dissolve the joint area and make it part of rural Lincoln.
And one more question, the landscape standards you were talking about for in-town, was an eighty percent screening of the commercial areas, was it?
Just between the highway service and basically the property to the north.
Okay. And has the drought condition been factored into these landscaping requirements as we?
Well, we do allow a fence, so it could be fence, it was eighty percent screening.
Screening, okay, so it doesn't necessarily have to be landscape.
Drought tolerant evergreens.
That takes care of my... That's all yours. You, Richard, you okay? Okay, this, it seems that's most of the questions that we have for the moment. Chris, what, is there anyone in the audience that would care to come up and identify themselves and give us their thoughts?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Pete DiGiordano and I own that piece of property that is zoned light industrial. And I also think that they did a great job of the planning over there, except with that exception. I purchased that piece of property because it was light industrial, and I don't think that it's fair to me, since I paid additional monies for it when I purchased it, to rezone it into agricultural.
That's the purple one that we're talking about?
Right there, right. It's surrounded by that Nader Road, which Wayne knows a lot about, I guess, and they owned all that property at one time.
Right.
How did that become zoned industrial, do you know?
Did you buy it from Kellison?
I forgot, I bought, I think the person that I bought it from lived in LA.
Oh, okay, because Jim Kellison originally had that property, he was going to put a facility out there and he never did.
Okay.
And that goes back into...
Was that the manufacturer that made cars, fiberglass stuff?
In Lincoln, yeah.
Yeah, anyway, I purchased it because it was light industrial, I have a cabinet business and I was going to move my cabinet business out there. And then with the sewer and water situation and stuff, I decided not to, and I built a cabinet business on another piece of property. But if you zoned that to agriculture, I'm going to lose a lot of money on it. I've been paying taxes on it, it's industrial.
Yeah, because it's, I think it's going, they are proposing an agricultural twenty on it, I think.
Right, but that, I mean, that's not why I bought it. I owned a piece of property behind it, that long pie-shaped, I'm not pie-shaped thing, that rectangular space right there, yeah, I owned that, I think I paid sixty thousand for that and two seventy-five for the other because of the zoning. So I'm definitely against that.
Yeah. My only challenge is, is I, because obviously Chris and I talked about this, is that it's not really compatible with what's around it. If it was closer to Sheridan, I think that that would be something I could, you know, support more. And as you know, there, or may not, if Placer County is looking at a Placer County conservation plan that they want to implement, where they really kind of map the county for any future development and what it might look like. And this whole area all around there is going to be designated more as kind of an open space area or agricultural area. So that's not going to be compatible with the, what the county is going to be overlaying for this area. So even if it was left as industrial, I don't think the county would ever really support that because it is incompatible with, you know, what they want for that general area there. And I understand it impacts your values on your property, but I know that that's going to be an issue in the future.
Well, I understand that, and I've also, I've been through this before, I bought a piece of property in Lincoln that was zoned duplexes, and then they wanted to change it to single family, and so I got an attorney and looked at it. There is a law that if you own a piece of property in the county or state or whoever decides to rezone it and change it, then they have to pay you the difference in the value. You can't just take value away from people and say, hey, this is what we want. Now, I spent my money on that, paid cash for it, worked real hard, and I, it's just not fair. So you, maybe you need to check into the law because you can't do that without compensation. That is, that's a fact. We still live in America and things like that can't happen to Americans just because somebody else decides they want to change something after a person's paid a premium to get it. Have you heard of that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so then...
We'll let the legal person kind of...
Yeah, so then, then, you know, I'm not, I'm not opposed, I was offered a million dollars for that piece of property and turned it down, and I'm not opposed to you guys doing whatever you want to do to it, but I am opposed from people just taking my property, zoning it down, devaluing it and telling me, hey, man, it was nice, we wanted something else to have in there. That's not nineteen sixty-six, I got drafted, went to Vietnam, volunteered for the infantry, extended my tour, I was a scout for Second Battalion, Eighth Infantry Recon Battalion, and now I'm getting goosebumps. That's not what I went to fight for, I didn't go to fight for somebody looking at my piece of property and saying, hey, we'd like to have something else on it once it was zoned. The mistake was made at the time that that was zoned light industrial.
Yeah, originally, you supported the idea.
I never supported the idea, I never knew about the idea, so there was never a support, just like there was some questions that were asked that these people came, well, they never really said no, so you know what, they're supporting it. So I'm here to tell you today, I want to make it clear, I'm not in support of that, I'll be losing money if I do that, and I'm not prepared to lose money, and I don't think that you as an American citizen and a person that's in charge of looking out for my best interests should put me in that position. Do you have an answer to that last part?
Right.
Do you think that it's fair for me to take the hit because somebody along the way did that? And now all of a sudden, I'm being asked to pay for it.
Right. No, I appreciate your position, I'm just saying that it's, I'm troubled because it's inconsistent with what's around it.
And you know what, I can agree with you. I'm not here to discuss, you know, or say, hey, you know, I agree with you, maybe it is, but the fact of the matter is, is that's what it is, and that's how I bought the property. Now, I'm asking you gentlemen, if any of one of you had went out and purchased that property and they were going to devalue the property, is this a question, how would you feel about it?
Well, I understand your plight, I've had the same thing happen to me a couple times, I understand where you're coming from. I think the reality right here today is that we are a planning commission, and the planning commission makes planning decisions for the better or the worst of it. When you move on from here to the Board of Supervisors, they not only make planning decisions, but they also make money decisions, which is probably the appropriate place for you to maybe get relief if you, if you are entitled to it, I don't know the answer to that, and I'm not professing one way or the other, but they are better equipped to deal with your concerns than we are. We're just, I don't know whether you understand what I've just said, but it's, we deal with the ideal world, you might say, and then when you get to the Board of Supervisors, which is the next step, they typically are better able to deal with the concerns that you have.
That's maybe where I should be, I just wanted to come down here...
No, I think it's fine if you do.
And express my opinion on that, because like I said, you know, I have a family, I worked hard, I made investments for my family and myself, and I'm not to say that I would ever do anything with that, okay? I mean, that thing might sit out there until whatever, and at the time, if they zoned it residential and I turned it into housing, I'm not saying that I would have a problem with that. But what I'm saying is right now, it is just, as a businessman and as just a human being, it's lessening the value of my property.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, just as a point of discussion, I kind of think I'm somewhat in agreement, I mean, that's been zoned that way since the seventies at least?
Yeah.
As far as we can tell?
It's not my fault.
And by the average of how long people typically own property, most of the people owning property surrounding that have probably purchased it with the knowledge of what was there. And I don't know that changing it now is necessarily a good thing to do.
Well, I guess my question would be is what's going to happen when they overlay this new Placer County Conservation Plan? How would this impact inconsistencies like this?
Well, how do you deal with anything? I mean, you know, you're always going to have obstacles in your way, I have obstacles in my way every day that, and challenges that I have to, that I have to deal with, but the fact of the matter is, the decisions that I make are the decisions that I live with. If I had a crystal mirror and I could say, hey, you know what, this is going to happen, that's going to happen, and the other's going to happen, I never have any problems in life. The fact of the matter is, as Jeffrey stated, is that that was zoned like that. I purchased it because it was zoned like that. So to me, I think it's an American for somebody else to look at it and say, well, I think it'd be a lot prettier if that wasn't there. Well, you know, if I wouldn't have married that ugly woman, I could have married a pretty one, or if I would have married a pretty one, whatever, that was uncalled for. But it's just, things are what they are, and you have to work around them, and I'm not here to tell you that we're going to do anything with that. So at one time, in the future, would that ever be housing?
Well, I don't know, I mean, obviously what's being proposed is twenty acre minimums in it.
Right, but I'm saying that, you know, I live on a piece of property that's fifty-eight acres.
Right.
When I bought it, it was fifty-eight acres. Today, I'm going in for a map, it's a hundred and nineteen lots, so things do change.
Right.
Would that ever be proposed? I mean, people are going to keep, unless we have something terrible happen, our population's going to keep growing, that's evident. I moved to Lincoln, it was twelve hundred people, and right now, it's what, forty thousand? So things grow, things change.
Right.
I'm not opposed to putting houses on there at the time, and I probably won't do anything with it. I mean, I'm not, I don't have one intention to do anything with that property, it's simply the fact that, you know, I've purchased it for a reason, I paid a certain amount of money for that.
Right.
And now you're saying, hey, you know, we're just going to make it not worth anything. And as far as agriculture, what, you're a farmer, you guys, your family was farmers and ranchers, right?
Right.
What can I do to make a living off that piece of property?
That would be a challenge.
That'd be a challenge, right? So, but I understand the reason that you guys are wanting to keep those twenty acre minimums and forty acre minimums, because someday, if it goes to develop, if you have five out there, it's just going to be a mess. And you guys are looking to the future and you're thinking that someday it's got to push that way, correct?
Well, I think if this, again, this Placer County Conservation Plan goes into place, which likely, hopefully it will, is that it really says that a lot of that area is going to be more rural and open space, so that I don't ever see that being a concentrated area of housing at any point in the future. I mean, that's just at least my interpretation of where I think things are going out there. And I think the greatest challenge for Sheridan and any potential growth down the road has been its problem that it's had in the past, which again is just problematic for the future is water and sewer. The dependence on wells for water is obviously always going to be a problem, and then the sewer, the state agencies continue to make that more challenging as time goes along, so I think that there's going to be very limited growth and it is going to stay very rural in that area.
It was limited growth in Lincoln until the value was there, until the demand was there. Eventually, there is going to be a demand. I mean, I moved to Lincoln in nineteen fifty-six. When I moved to Lincoln, if you drove to Sacramento, it took ten minutes before you seen anything in Roseville, and then another ten minutes before you seen anything in Sacramento. At that time, it wasn't feasible, they didn't have the water, they didn't have the sewer, they didn't have the structure, but it's people like you with foresight that seen that eventually that's going to have to be there. Unless we have a war, population goes down, then some of these cities will be bulldozed and be reclaimed. But if, if the population keeps growing as it is growing, and as I've seen in my experiences, eventually with the highway out there, it's, somebody's going to look at it and say, hey, we'll bring in the water, we'll bring in the sewer, and we want to develop this.
Well, I think, again, the challenge is, is if, if the county comes up with this plan, this conservation plan, it pretty well locks in the future what this area is going to be, and it's going to be more rural.
Okay, well, you know, maybe the county's going to do that and that's what's going to happen. Right now, I'm dealing with my piece of property that was zoned light industrial, and that's how I purchased it. And like I said, as an American and as a person that's made an investment, you know, if you were standing over here and I was sitting over there and you came up and told me that, I would say, hey, we made a mistake, now we're going to have to live with our mistake. I wouldn't look at me and say that, hey, you know what, we're going to do this and this is how it's going to be. I mean, reality is reality, things happen, and that's what's happened. So I don't want to take up much more of your time, I'm just here to tell you and give you my reason for not wanting that, that changed. And especially if you're going to make it to where it's just going to be rural area forever. I mean, at least, even if you changed it, and I had an opportunity of twenty years down the road, if, if, you know, they build Lincoln out of thirty, forty years down the road, I mean, I'm not going to be here with my kids, hopefully Welby, then I would at least have a chance of it becoming something. What you're telling me is that I need to fight as hard as I can now to keep that like it is, because if you have your way, nobody's ever going to build on that.
Well, not me, it's the county.
Well, if, if, whatever, you know, if that happens, so I need that to stay like that, I want that on the record, and I'll go to whatever meeting that I need to go to. And I just want to be treated fairly. I would treat you fairly. I started out my cabinet shop in my garage, and now my building's a hundred and forty thousand square feet on thirteen acres, and the reason that I got there was by treating people fairly, by doing the right thing. You don't grow your business by treating people unfair. So I'm used to being fair, when my country called, I went, I treat people fair and I expect to be treated fair. With that, I'll close.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would care to come up and comment? Anyone else care to comment?
I just want to make one comment.
Okay, well, let me close the public comment down there, if there's no one else going to speak, we'll close the public comment period, and we'll come to staff and see if there's any questions that are...
I just wanted to bring up the fact that this gentleman mentioned that he just recently became aware of this land use change, I just want to, I guess, inquire with Chris, is there any other properties or owned by this gentleman that are subject to a land use change, and what, what is, you know, the property owner's position on that?
Pete owns the highway service chunk, this larger piece here, it's rural estate today that's proposed to be upzoned to highway service.
No problem, just bring my property value up. Go ahead.
Okay, so that's the upzone, and you're saying that's, okay.
It should also be pointed out that today, you cannot put a residence on an industrial park piece as zoned. So if you're locked in with industrial, no residence, no single family out there.
Chris, can you address the Placer County Conservation Plan and how that would impact properties that would be in, within that, that are kind of inconsistent with the plan? Because obviously, there's a sign-off by all of the state agencies for that as well, you know, Fish and Game and, you know, Corps of Engineers and the...
Well, the PCCP, or PCCP expert just left the room, but in general, the land use diagram and the, or the land use plan in the PCCP will actually show where the anticipated urban development is going to be located, the county's urban development and also the city of Lincoln or anyone else that wants to participate in the PCCP. And this area is designated as reserve area, so it would be habitat only. So like, once that's locked in, the county is basically on record saying there's going to be no intensive development in this area. You can keep your existing zoning, if you've got eighty acres and you've got twenty acre minimum, you can put your four lots there, so you can do your split, but if you want to come in for sixty-five hundred square foot lots, the county's going to say, this is really not consistent with the...
Well, if this was left industrial, what would happen if you came into the county and said, I want to do something industrial on there?
I believe she'd be able to still do industrial.
If the PCCP goes in with industrial zoning, can you still develop industrial?
Morning, Members of the Commission, Lauren Clark, Community Development Resource Agency. I didn't think I would be talking about the Placer County Conservation Plan today. The implementation of the PCCP does not include any sort of zoning or land use changes. So there's not an overlay district, there's not a change in the zoning code that would be applied to property within that large reserve acquisition area that you've, that you've seen. The current zoning of the property being industrial park would require a use permit for any activity, and you would simply have to take into consideration surrounding land uses at the time that an entitlement came forward. The property is surrounded by farm zone twenty acre minimum, there is some conservation in the area with Yankee Slough, you would take that into consideration with or without the PCCP in terms of its compatibility with surrounding land... with surrounding land uses, and you would evaluate that through the use permit and the environmental review for the projects. So the PCCP in and of itself would not necessarily prohibit or affect. It's really, what is the surrounding land use at the time? Can you make the use compatible with that? And then you would proceed with that under the use permit. The primary issue here is, is a lack of services to the property. So it can only develop on septic and well, and there is no plans either through the city of Lincoln or Placer County to provide services to that area, because it is rural, and it is farm, and it is open space.
Okay, any questions?
Lack of utilities would mean at this point, if any industrial development happened there, it would be fairly low intensity use as it is, correct?
It could only develop on septic and well at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you, that helped. We've closed the public hearing portion of it. I don't think it would be appropriate at this time for us to, yes. Oh, yeah, Chris.
Pete is, he wants to float a compromise rezone, which would be higher density residential, instead of the farm twenty, maybe go into something else that would allow more than one house out there, because he's, well, he's got the two farm pieces, so he could do some splits, but I couldn't do much out there. So I'll let him take over if, if you're willing to reopen public testimony.
I want to be sure I understand. So instead of keeping it as industrial, we're going to, in converting it to farm, we're going to take an intermediate step where it could allow some residential development? Is that the way I understand?
That's what he'd like to propose.
Can we do that today?
I don't think...
We haven't noticed anything like that, or had any MAC comments or anything else?
Correct. That'd be a change in the project description. We would have to go revisit, you know, what was written in my document to even entertain such a request.
I would guess that if this is something that's worth considering, that it would be done at the board level, they could, they could amend it, I suppose, at that point, couldn't they? Or couldn't they not? Not?
I think the same obstacle would be presented to the board, and that is, does the environmental document need to be revisited? And I would say, yes, at least we would have to look at it to ensure it's adequate. I'm sorry?
If we left it industrial, it would not need any further environmental review?
Yes, it would, actually. It would be, it would be prudent under CEQA to go back and ensure that we still have an adequate NAG deck, and here's why. Currently, right now, the project description describes property in farm zone. That's how the environmental analysis was done, particularly with aspects such as traffic, transportation impacts. It's not to say there would be an additional impact that wasn't looked at, but it is prudent to go back and ensure that you still have an adequate NAG deck if this property was to stay industrial, or if this property was to go to another zoning that wasn't contemplated within that project description. Because as this commission knows, with a negative declaration, you need to be able to state without, without any doubt that the all potential impacts, that there are no potential impacts, or if potential impacts have occurred, they can be mitigated to a less than significant level. In order to make that finding, staff would have to go back and review it in either case, if it goes, if you wish to keep it industrial, or if you wish to consider some other land use zoning. I'd also point out on, on the latter, there are probably other aspects that staff would want to look at in terms of compatibility of, of another use that wasn't contemplated during all the discussions with the MAC, the subcommittee, or internal analysis as to what would be a compatible, balanced plan.
Yeah, that troubles me as well, is that this has gone through quite a vetting process and the feedback from the MAC, and if we leave it, that's not something they necessarily had opportunity to weigh in on.
Okay, well, it appears that our hands are pretty much tied, then, I guess, to what we have here.
I have one question for Chris. This is on how, it's a little different, but on housing, and that one chart you had here, I'm looking on page twelve, where it says, identify the types of development that should be encouraged. And notice that, that the far right hand there, it says affordable housing and small housing units was kind of the least of the desired choices. My question would be, with the plan now, is it balanced to provide, because we've had a lot of discussion the last year or so on housing and providing a mix of housing. Is the plan as proposed still has enough variety that would meet the housing element of our general plan?
Yeah, I think, I think the community's fear was apartment-type development, higher density in the townsite. I think the overall feeling is there's enough affordable housing in Sheridan.
Okay.
A lot of the townsite homes are small, I'd say like twelve hundred square feet, or fairly small lots. And that's balanced with the rural areas where some of the homes are five, six thousand square feet on twenty acres with gated driveways, and so I think there's a pretty good balance.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Jeffrey? Could you put it back to the motion? Motion, propose, yeah, the proposal. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, just...
I'd like to clarify one other thing. There's another particular in the government code with relation to the Planning Commission's recommendation on a general plan amendment, and when it goes to the board. There's a provision in the government code that states that if the board considers something different than what the Planning Commission had considered, it actually needs to send it back. So I wanted to clarify that the commission's hands are not tied on this issue, and you may want to address it head-on versus the board than having to send it back. So I just wanted to clarify that. And, and you may want to consider a straw vote, if you will, on this one particular issue, to see if we even have the ability to move it forward. Because I think staff would agree, if we can't move the general plan amendment, Sheridan Community Plan Amendment together, we don't want, we're not going to move the package, because the package is intricately tied to that particular piece of the puzzle, and that's where we have to have the four-member vote to move it on, one way or the other. I'm not presuming what your vote might be, but it has to be a four-member vote. So just a thought that you may want to take that straw vote on this particular issue, and, and see where you're at. Or you can go ahead and take it in the order that's been presented, really your call.
I have a sense we're not going to agree on this. So we may need, you know, I think we should do that straw vote, but I think we're going to be kicking it back for further review.
Well, so do we need a straw motion for a straw vote?
Well, and if it's the consensus of the commission that you would like to continue this and direct staff, and I'd recommend that you give staff some clear directions as to what they should be looking at, the scope of their, their review, that's certainly another option for this commission to consider.
I'd like to ask staff a question. Is this the first time this has been brought up? Was this brought up at all these other meetings that, that are listed and, and you've also enumerated this one piece of, this parcel?
We've had other property owners come in, particularly the highway service owners came in and objected to the proposed rezoning. And the MAC basically asked the family, it's up to you, do you want the rezoning or not? She came back and said, we prefer to say, to stay rural estate, and the, the subcommittee agreed, so they were dropped from that. But no other property owner showed up during our subcommittee meetings, and then Pete came to the March MAC informational meeting. So it was, I think, the first meeting that the MAC actually started considering the document. But to be fair, he did not object to that rezoning at the time.
If, in fact, we don't have, well, we don't have two things. We don't have a full commission or a big enough commission. I would, I'm going to suggest that we continue the item rather than necessarily just not having it pass and not, not being able to give direction. So I think, I think the, the direction, the only direction we can go initially is to wait, continue it to a full commission or a larger commission. Is, is that, is that something that we can, can we agree on? We can, we can, just a majority can do that, can it? We don't need the four vote?
Well, you're saying we're going to need, she's saying that we're going to need the four votes to move this forward, we're going to have to be unanimous on it. And I can, I already know we're not unanimous. I can always tell Jeff is already at the other end of supporting the position of adopting it as presented. I mean, I'm saying I'm going to adopt it as presented, and Jeff's saying no. So I think we need to kick it back to, and say, this issue needs to be worked out, it needs to be taken back to the MAC.
We can't do that. I don't think we can just kick it back and tell, give them direction, can we? We have to just continue it to another time when we have a...
Oh, no, I, I think you can provide direction to staff. Certainly, if you want to continue it to a full commission. But if you have concerns and want staff to look at particular items, I would encourage you to articulate those right now.
Well, the problem with that is it's going to unravel the environmental document, and that's a major process.
Right, right.
Not necessarily. Perhaps what you can, let's think about this. Because you also want the full commission to consider, obviously, the missing commissioners would have to listen to this hearing, understand the concerns, get up to speed, obviously. Maybe the proposal you might want to consider is to continue, but also have staff bring back answers to particular questions with respect to the issues at hand that could be presented to the entire commission. Now, does that mean that the environmental document might have to be recirculated? Possibly. But I think it is something that could be reviewed at least preliminarily to provide the commission with more information. But in order for staff to be able to do that, I, I would highly recommend, then, that the commission provide more direction, so that staff knows what, they're not just bringing back this presentation again, but they're bringing back this presentation with perhaps responses or elaborations on certain issues, so that you have everything at that hearing.
Let me ask one other question. The applicant, in this case, not the applicant, but the homeowner or the property owner, offered a compromise, sort of. Would it be possible to put a, a land use designation, an LUI or something, on that property in lieu of the commercial? But also, it would leave it as farm, but you would have this development potential. But in order to use that development potential, you would have to make, at that time, an environmental evaluation of whether it's affecting anything, or whether it could go forward on that basis. Is that a possibility? Or, I guess I'm looking for ways to get everything out of this, and I guess maybe it's not going to be possible, I don't know.
I think we're still looking at taking another look at the environmental document, because the project description technically changes. You know, would there be any change to the, the negative declaration that was prepared? I don't know, but that's something we would have to consider, even if you had a, you know, some sort of development reserve or something put over this property where it would allow for future potential development, and, you know, those impacts to be evaluated at a later date. Those are all options, but it still impacts the, the environmental document, and I think we're still in the same, you know, kind of catch 22. You know, what I'm hearing today is, is, you know, whether or not that industrial zoning is retained on that property, and then you have, you know, most recently, the proposal to go to some other land use, kind of a compromised land use. But all of those change the project description, change the environmental document.
I guess what I was trying to do is just postpone the environmental consideration to that potential, not to, till a later time. Well, I'm sorry, the way, the way it's, the mission's been set up, once we close the public hearing, I think it has to stay closed until we make a decision. I'm sorry.
I'd have to do an environmental report on that property. If I go to the...
I'm sorry, sir, I... I, I understand, but...
I'd like to propose that we do continue this and ask staff to take this back to the community through MAC or whatever is appropriate, and have them address this, because I think the community needs to speak on this as to what their desire is for this.
I think they've already spoken, they've had so many meetings.
Right, and, right, I would agree. But we're not going to get four votes for that right now.
Well, no, I know, but I don't think it's sending it back. I think we need to continue it to the full commission, or at least more than we have today, and then go forward. Not that staff couldn't look at a few things in the meantime, but...
Well, he, he can make a motion that staff consider it as part of the continuation, if you want. It doesn't matter, I don't know whether, and I guess the question is, is there a way to determine whether a change would trigger environment, or an environmental reconsideration?
So I think that the, the change from industrial to farm has been, been fully vetted through, you know, through the MAC committees and everybody involved. So I think that, you know, recommendations have been made based on all that. So what is new today, what I'm hearing, is another land use that, that may be presented. And if that's the case, that has not been vetted through any of the groups that have been involved with this.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm not, I'm one person not in favor of changing the land use from what this, this plan is envisioning, so I'm not in favor of sending it back through the whole process again.
Yeah, and I doubt you'd get the community to support it, because their, you know, their first, I think, item was to maintain the ruralness of the community, and that would go completely against that.
I agree.
Well, go ahead, you were going to make a motion...
Well, I can make a motion that we continue this item till we have, you know, a full board or a full commission to, to address it, and that would direct staff to have explored the potential options to the property.
Do you want a time certain or an open date?
Yeah, I would, I would continue it probably off calendar, so we have time to work with the property owner and look at, you know, some viable solutions.
Okay. Is there any, any other comments by council? Just open date and, and staff can work with whoever is appropriate? Is that your motion then?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this to an open date. And I, I encourage the, the next meeting that the commissioners who aren't here today that might be there in the future, get themselves up to speed. It's going to, maybe they should have a workshop with Chris or something, just to be sure they understand where we've come from and what we're doing. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gray, Johnson, Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson, Johnson, Mr. Akuchi?
Yes.
Mr. Ilofsen, Mr. Seton?
Yes. Okay, the motion passes, and so we have, we have continued this hearing to a time uncertain. And I encourage you to work with staff to see if there's some middle ground that might resolve your concerns. No promises, but just...
Well, I'm flexible, I'm willing to negotiate.
Okay, well, you'll have some time. If there's no further discussion or comments, the meeting's over.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, good job.
Okay, now I'm...